Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Work Session. It is April the 5th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. We're in the Council Chambers, which is the Centennial Building here at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. If you're sitting at home and you have not exercised your right to vote today for school board, get up, go to your car and go vote, please. We'll let you watch this on Facebook later. In the meantime, the rest of us, Mitch, I think we're starting with you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we were asked to look at the ward boundaries. It's something we typically do every 10 years after the census is done. We usually wait until the federal government does theirs and the state and the county. So tonight, we've got kind of a presentation. What we did, we worked with ACOG and they helped us with the ward boundary maps and come up with the numbers. They helped us last time to do that. That way, we were not taking care of that. And they were, they took the census count numbers and the tracks and come up with the maps. So we'll go ahead and get started tonight. There is some state statutes that come into play that we'll talk about that we are, have to comply with. Basically, what it says is as soon as practical after the census tracks and counts are done, that the municipal body should look at the boundaries of municipality to make sure that our numbers are evenly distributed as much as possible. It says the municipal governing body, to the extent practical, shall not subdivide precincts established by the county election board and establishing ward or council boundaries. So that is something we look at real close. We're still waiting for the county to provide us with their precincts, but we'll go ahead and show you what we got so far. There's not a whole lot of changes in what we did, but we will show you as we go forward. Basically, for us to do a proposed change in the ward boundaries, we have to come up with a resolution of the municipal governing body or initiate petition filed with the governing body of the municipality. Any change in the number of the boundaries or wards shall be made with due regard to equitable apportionment of the population and the convenience and contingency of those awards. And like I said, these are all state statutes that we pulled off. The governing body shall give a 30, at least a 30-day notice of the proposal of the governing body to change the name, boundaries, or number of the wards. And what we're doing is the boundaries. The notice shall be published at least once after the 30-day notice period. The governing body may make the proposed changes by ordinance, which shall be approved by two-thirds of the voting members of the council. Okay, within 30 days after the election, adoption of the question, initiative petition requesting a change in the name, boundaries, or number of wards, the municipal governing body by ordinance shall make the requested changes. And we're actually going to do it by resolution. Unless otherwise provided for by the governing body, the effective date of a change in name, boundaries, or number of wards shall be effective date of the ordinance making such change. Election of council members or trustees for wards, which have no representation due to such change, shall take place at the time established by the governing body of the municipality, but no later than the next regular municipal election. The terms of office of such new council members or trustees shall be provided by, for by law applicable to the form of municipal government. A change in the boundaries of number of wards shall not disqualify councilman or trustee from completing the term of which he was elected. Basically, that's basically saying that we can't, or shouldn't, change a ward boundary that would affect that council person and take them where they're not able to still serve. We do have the map as it is right now, but the numbers of the population in those ward boundaries, you can see that on ward boundary on four, that there's 6,533. It's almost 1,000 different than most of the others. The census count that we have is 23,630. And that was given to us April 3rd, 2020. So the recommendation that we have, and this is showing the streets of the current one, the recommendations that ACOG come up with is dividing it back up where we get the most evenly as possible ward boundary changes. And that's about as close as you can get.
Can you go back to the previous one then? Okay, can you go back to the new one?
As you can see.
So basically, we're just giving Ward 3.
Yes, Ward 1 will grow. Ward 2 has some changes.
Not much.
Not much, huh?
Looks like that biggest change is in Ward 3.
Yes. And if I had my pointer, I would work, I'd point at it.
Yeah.
There were some minor changes. We can actually zoom in a little bit more. As you can see, Ward 1 probably had the most change. With the census tract, there is some commercial property in there that kind of looks funny that we may want to look at, taking out and squaring it up a little bit more. But this is what they recommended. So what we're looking for is, you know, if this is something you're interested in, I think since we have 1,000 difference in it, it's probably appropriate to make some changes. But the councils are the one that would need to make the suggestions of what they'd like to see. And this is the best. They, they looked at other options and it got where you cut half blocks and stuff like that and it doesn't work.
Eric, I'm glad you're here because this affects you more than anyone because you have more people, aren't you Ward 4?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And I do apologize, City Manager and Madam Mayor, for my tardiness.
That's right. I just, I'm glad because, you know, you have almost 1,000 more than the rest of us do. And that shocks me because so much of that is agriculture.
The, the, well, when you look at that, we're coming into the urbanized area. Yeah, there's a lot of that out there. It's not heavily populated, but when we come in the urbanized area, that's where we're getting the numbers. If you remember right, Frisco Ridge, you know, Sexton 2 and 3. Has a lot more houses that were just completed.
Can you go back to that first slide of the map so Eric can see that? There it is.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's where we're at today, the, and the proportions of the difference in the numbers. Ward 4 has got over 1,000 more.
So it basically, see that little green tag next to the yellow? It's going to take that off.
Is, uh, is the population difference, do you know if it's primarily in the, like the River Mesa and the Wagner Estates area? Well, this does not take in consideration Yukon Crossing. It doesn't take in consideration of River Mesa Section 3. Because at the time the census was done, those counts were not taken.
Even more.
Yeah. But it, it takes in some of the Frisco Ridge Section 3, that last portion that was built out. If, if you remember right, this count was done and actually the number come out on April 1st, 2020. So it was almost a year, year and a half before that.
Because my ward's pretty built.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not much new housing going in.
No, some of them are pretty static, other maybe one or two or something like that. Some of them don't have any existing lots. Like I said, this is something that we have come up with. We feel like ACOG does a very good job of doing that. They don't have any investment or it doesn't affect them any. What they do is take the census tracts and census blocks to come up with that.
Can you show him at Slide 2 then?
That's showing the roads and then this is the recommendation is. So you can see it's removed some. And one of the main things that we do make sure of, that we hold that council person's ward in whole where we don't put you out of it. The, the statute says that we can't put you out. You're, you're in your ward stuff.
My comment would be on that one, my gosh, to square it off some.
Well, the, the things that we, we try to do, you gotta, we can't subdivide a census tract.
Thanks.
And the track is usually the block. So anybody within that block is that's track. I probably should have brought some because it's real confusing. You got tracks and you got blocks.
Yes.
And there's a bunch of red lines and it gets real confusing of what goes on.
I know, I did a lot of walking and that's why I can tell you, I would like to see it be squared away a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. And the number that they use this time for each household is 2.60. So a little over two and a half persons per household is what they use for their number.
That little blow section, that's kind of confusing to people.
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit confusing. We try to keep it as square as you can. Like I said, you can't subdivide a census tract. And we can bring you, kind of to show you that because it, but that gets real confusing of what those look like.
I didn't realize, that little pink bubble there, North Abandonment? Was that me before? Okay, I was going to say, I didn't realize, I thought, oh, I didn't campaign there, okay.
See, it's not there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like I said, you try to get the numbers as close as you can.
Well, I think it's a good idea because Eric, I think it's not fair to you to have 1,000 more people.
And they did look at several different options, but then, you know, when you start getting like this, it gets real confusing.
What are your thoughts, Eric?
Well, Ward 4 specifically, you know, generally, you would think the same housing addition would make sense for them to be all members of, you know, residents in the same ward. That's my first, you know, reaction, so I think that would make sense. Especially if the numbers support that.
So that kind of squares you up. Problem is that Eric's already over again because it's not including two housing additions.
But the count's not going to be done for another 10 years.
So I think we have to reduce him or he's going to be over by 2,000.
Yes, that doesn't even include the last two streets in Frisco Ridge, right? I have to go back, but at least there was portion of those that were not constructed at the time that the census count was taken. I can tell you that. I just don't know how many.
I know at least two streets.
Yeah. Because they, they built up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that, yeah, that needs, something we need to look into. Thank you so much for doing all that work and bringing that to us. I think that is a wonderful idea. We'll hear more about that later. And so now we're going to go to, is it not, it's not Frank, are you Frank? Frank, okay, Frank.
Do I have the rest of the session or do I have to shorten my time? Okay, good.
Until 7 o'clock.
All right, good deal. Thank you for carving out a little bit of time for our discussion at the workshop and at the council meeting tonight. My name is Frank Crawford. If you don't remember, I'm with Crawford and Associates. We're kind of the financial advisors that help the city put together its annual financial statements that are then subsequently audited by CPA firm who I assume will be here later tonight to address you about the audit, but I can pretty much tell you what he's going to say. Your opinion was clean and you had no findings, so.
Wonderful.
That's, that's, that's the shortened version of what he'll say. What that opens up for me though is this nearly 90-page document, which is very difficult to read, doesn't do a great job of communicating what the numbers mean. It just shows you what the numbers are. And then the auditor basically tells everyone, okay, those are the right numbers. What it doesn't do is it doesn't really do a good job of explaining what the numbers mean. And so that's why we put together this Performator Report that we talk about every year where we try to take about 17 or 18 different financial ratios that are important to the government finance sector. And we basically benchmark them and rate them on a scale that everybody understands, which is basically zero or one to a 10. And then we compile all of those ratios together so that I can present you a, an overall health and performance score that basically says, how are we doing on a scale of 1 to 10? And if I tell you that you're in the 10 area, that's great. If I tell you you're down at the 1 or 0, that's not so great. And so we've been tracking this for, gosh, it seems like about nine years now, I think. Although we didn't get involved until probably 2015 or so, I think we went back and looked at a couple of years before that to kind of get a good history or a benchmark. And so that's kind of what this report is. And so I'm going to kind of just walk you through a little bit of that report tonight and tell you where the score for our June 30, 6:30, 21 fiscal year ended up. And it's really another good report. If you flip to page 5, which I just noticed that my page numbers, which are in a very, very dark gray number on top of a dark blue corner. So page 5, if you count through, says the Performator Rating Slide, which is the overall score. Kind of shows you three different ways to read this, which is, if you like pictures and charts and bar graphs and pies and stuff, there on the left will kind of show you a nine or 10-year history of what the overall score has been and whether it's climbing or declining. On the right side, you have a narrative, but not a ton of it. So you don't have to read, you know, a very small font. And then at the bottom, usually in either a green, yellow, or red, you're going to see a score, which green is good, yellow is kind of cautionary, and red's not so good. So our overall score is a 7.6. That's up from our 7.4, which was where we were the year before. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to kind of look and say, well, gosh, it kind of looks like we're improving our overall financial health and performance every year since we hit a pretty low area right around 2015 when we had dropped briefly below what I would consider to be satisfactory. In fact, we had about three or four years there from 2012 through about 2015, maybe a little bit of 2016 and 17 where we were really struggling. We were just kind of at the cusp of what I would consider overall satisfactory health and performance. And then, of course, the city made some changes and those changes have yielded now an improved score overall. Since this is kind of a combined overall score, it's measuring not just health and not just performance, but really a combined health and performance and also a sustainability factor. I can break that overall score into three components. And those are the three that you see there on that slide. So even though we score an overall 7.6, I can break that down into individual segments of 0 to 10 on each of those three sectors. So when you see the financial position ratio, that's really talking about a picture of health. How do we look health-wise at June 30, 2021? It's a snapshot of the balance sheet, a snapshot of where we're at at that point in time. That score is a 6.4, which again is above our model of a 5 is satisfactory. And it's actually improved from about a 6.1 where it was the year before. So that score inched up a little bit. Our, our highest score is the performance segment. And that's again, the fiscal year that ended June 30, 21. So 7, 1 of 20 through June 30, 21. That 12-month performance, we scored a 9.4. That's a, obviously near excellent score. Rarely do I have anybody that scores really high, although I've had some decent performances in the last few years from the COVID-related impacts that I had thought would probably hurt our scores have actually done the opposite. We've done better during COVID. COVID has actually been good for the city as far as a financial health or performance perspective. More people stayed home, more people stayed local, more people bought online. And that results in sales tax and use tax dollars, which is one of the life floods of the city coming in. So performance-wise, we had another very good year, even a little bit better than the year we had before in fiscal 20. And then the last component, which is called financial capability, really is more of a financial sustainability. Here, what we're looking for is not a lot of movement from year to year, but that we stay above a 5. Once we're above a 5 in sustainability or capability, that means we've got the ability to sustain this operation at that level for an extended period of time. Once that capability score starts coming down, that means you've kind of approached your limit on being able to tax the citizens. In other words, they won't approve any more sales tax pennies or quarter pennies because your rate's already very high. Your debt limits are extremely high. In other words, you're kind of maxed out your capability or your sustainability. We're not there, obviously. We're still right in the, in the mid-sixes. So again, we have well above satisfactory sustainability. So overall, those things add or average to a 7.6. If you tried to do quick math and add those three numbers together and then divide it by 3, it's not going to equal exactly 7.6 because first of all, all the, the, the factors are not the same. Some are weighted heavier than others. So it's more of a weighted score than anything else. A couple more things about the overall perspective before we kind of go into a couple of slides of detail. And then I'll, I don't know if I want to go through all 30 pages of this, but I'll point out a few things. There isn't a government that exists in the world that could score a 10 on the overall score across the board. If it was, we would all move to that government. No tax rate, no debt, brand-new streets. You know, every factor would, would be extremely high. That, that government doesn't exist. There's also not a government that's in the 0. That, that can't happen either, although I'm kind of getting tested on my low, low end. There are a couple of governments that are not anywhere near here that are close to the 0 score, which is kind of surprising. But you don't even want to go there because it's, it's, it's bad. So however, you're going to fall somewhere between technically a 1 and a 9. The highest score that's ever occurred in the 20 years we've been doing this across any government across the United States and including 11 international governments is a 9.1. So that kind of gives you a little perspective that a 7.6 is an extremely good score. And compared to where we were five or six years ago, it's an extremely good score. It's very difficult to move this in any one direction in a great aspect each individual year. Much like if you had gotten yourself into a deficit, it didn't happen overnight. It, it happens because you've overspent year after year after year and dug a, a really big hole. The same thing's true about improving your financial health and success. It's very difficult to improve it all in one year. And that's why we see a stair-step approach with methods and measures taken each year to improve the financial health and performance a little bit every year. And so with that as our perspective, the last perspective I'll give you is kind of an overall, what I've seen this year, both in Oklahoma and in, in other governments across the US that, that we do this for. Most of the scores for fiscal 21 have dropped slightly from their score in fiscal 20. So you're bucking the trend here. You're one of the fewer governments that actually had a better score in fiscal 21 than what their score was for fiscal 20. But don't get me wrong, fiscal 20 and 21 were extremely good performance years. And as we continue to perform well, that only improves the health factor as we, as we continue to climb. And we're not improving our health by borrowing more money or raising our tax rates, which is why our capability number stays relatively high also. And so the rest of this report, again, most of it is an individual rating or an individual slide, you know, that talks about each ratio a little bit. So I'm not sure I'm going to spend a ton of time, but I'll, I'll kind of point out a couple of things. And I think I'm now on page 7 or 8, which would say the level of unrestricted net position. I believe it's actually page. Yeah, it looks like 8 if I can see through my gray number on a blue background. That was brilliant, by the way. And by the way, if you haven't noticed, the color scheme and the fonts are different. Where I used to have a little speedometer and it was kind of bland. I decided I would jazz up the colors and kind of do a, well, it ended up with a blue and gold sausage look, but that wasn't really the, the intent. But I think it looks a little better, reads a little better color-wise. So let me talk a little bit about one of the, the bad ratios for you, which is called your level of unrestricted net position. Net position is basically the difference between everything we own minus everything that we owe. So that's our total net position. And in our total net position, we've got about $48 million, which is great. That means we have $48 million worth of assets more than we, what we owe in liabilities, including short and long-term debt. However, some of that money is tied up in capital, you know, like buildings and roads and machinery and equipment, which you can't spend. Some of it is restricted for narrow purposes where we can only use certain money to pay debt service or we can only use certain money to spend it on capital. And then we get down to this leftover factor, which is what I kind of equate to a rainy day issue, although it's not cash, it's, it's a concept. And that's called unrestricted net position. You're in the negative and notice you've been in the negative for a number of years. In fact, in 2015, you went negative for the first time. And then it's been negative ever since, although it's been improving every time. Well, what happened in 2015? That's when the accounting rules changed related to pension accounting, where not only did we have to record your unfunded pension liability for your non-uniformed employees, we have to actually absorb a state, a, a portion of the state's unfunded liability on their firefighter and police pension systems. Even though that's not something we have to pay, we have to reflect our proportionate share of those systems underfunding. Those two liabilities alone, your, your, your system's funded plan and the firefighter system is about $21 million. So if we didn't record that, then all of a sudden, these numbers would be flopped. Your net position would be positive instead of negative, and it'd be extremely positive. But again, we don't get to just remove that, we have to reflect that. So even if we just left our own pension system issue, which is about 81% funded, so again, not fully funded, but not, not terrible. It'll operate at an 80% funding ratio as long as the, the size of the government doesn't contract based on the number of employees that are employed very rapidly at any point in time. But the 13 million is there that relates to about the firefighter's pension. So again, those numbers are really large. They're embedded in your net position, which is pretty much what drags your, your net position down. So that's one of the ratios that, that basically doesn't reflect very well, but there's rationale for it. It's again, more liability that you have, you have technically responsible for, but again, it's not something you're going to write a check for. You're going to continue to fund your pension system based on how much the actuary tells you to fund every year. And then in theory, mathematically, if everything else works out with investment earnings and employer contributions and other state sources, basically it will fund itself, but it doesn't fund itself overnight. It takes literally a career lifetime of an employee to fund itself. And that's why it's a long-term issue. That's why we don't really, you know, pay too much attention to it. The other slide I'll talk about is one that's actually very good, which is the next page, which is kind of looking at the same factor, but only in the general fund. We don't call it unrestricted, we call it unassigned, but it's the same thing. How much money do we have left over in our main city operating fund? And we call that leftover fund balance. All fund balance really is, is unspent revenue. So we've accumulated unspent revenue for years and it builds up in fund balance. And we measure that basically every year. We've got about 34% of our annual revenue stream in a unassigned capacity. That's about $9.2 million. That's extremely good. That alone scores you a 10 on this model. However, you've actually got an additional $6.7 million where you have set aside in a restricted, I can't really touch this stabilization fund, that's only there for what we call extreme emergency purposes. And again, we had to go into that and basically drain it about five or six years ago for a few unusual circumstances that had occurred. So now that's been built back up, it's there. And it's actually in addition to this 9 million. So the 34%, if I were to consider the rate stabilization or the stabilization reserve there, would jump you to actually to about 59 or almost 60%. So that's excellent, a far cry from where we were five or six years ago, but obviously a 10 in our model.
We have about two minutes left.
Okay, well then I better speed up. So, so with that, I'm going to move you to the first summary page, which is on slide 16. And basically on slide 16, all you see is the last five years of each of those ratios and the overall score for that. And so there's your financial position. It's the 6.4 that we kind of talked about. And now the rest of these slides, again, are just the ratios that relate to performance. So the next five series of slides are all very good scores. Most of them are 10s. And again, there's a summary page at the end of those five. You know, we're looking at whether our business-type activities fund themselves, like our utilities. We're looking at sales tax growth. We're looking at the overall change in net position. Are we worth more, less, or about the same than where we were at the beginning of the year? Again, most of these are 10s and that produces a 9.4 that I believe you can see on slide 24, which is a little better than the 9.2 for performance that we had last year. And then the last series of slides deals with capability or sustainability. And again, uh, if you go to the last summary slide, you'll see, which is on slide thirty-three. We scored a six point four there, but that's a little bit better than where we were the year before. But as I said earlier, sustainability doesn't really change very often, except for big swings in sales tax rates or debt issuances and things of that nature. So combined, uh, a good year, a great year. Bucked the trend of where most governments are going, which is kind of edging down a little bit in fiscal twenty-one, but we had a better year in twenty-one than we did in twenty. Not great, not super better, but better. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. We appreciate you.
Very welcome.
At doing that and for bringing it and, and to making it to where we can understand. I appreciate that. Do we need to take a break? We're ready to go on in. Okay. We have five seconds. All right. Boy, you did a great job.